Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the December 17th, 2024 meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order 4:15. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, no Samantha thing?
No, she unfortunately, her daughter got sick.
Oh, okay. Well, we got covered, minutes covered?
We're covered with the LCAT. They'll take the minutes off there.
Okay.
Have we heard from Manny?
I don't know. I just, you know, I thought so.
And as I speak, there he is.
There he is.
All right.
Right on cue.
All right. Okay, so we'll continue with our roll call. Pam, if you don't mind starting.
Pamela Blair Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Gordon Smith Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Rochella.
Florence Rother.
Amy Delight.
Amy Delight.
We have minutes for approval. I take a motion, please.
I move to approve the November 18th, 2024 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by Amy, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries four to zero. Committee and subcommittee communications. Emmanuel, would you like to start?
Last week I had the opportunity to go to the middle school concert, do the next concert, and then this Wednesday is the high school concert.
All sing-alongs, do you get, you're the singer, you're in the chorus here or you're in the band?
In the band.
Okay. The field trip, go ahead.
It's at 7:00 p.m.
Here?
Yep.
Sweet.
Tomorrow night? Yeah. Good numbers, right Manny? Coming up? Awesome.
Amy.
Hey, I wanted to share that I attended the same concert as a parent and I just can't speak highly enough of the band director, the orchestra director. It was amazing. I really could not believe what these middle school kids were doing. Like, one of the things was like something Trans-Iberian Orchestra. You know, you see it, I'm like, oh dear.
Wow.
And then they started and I was blown away. So, just wanted to give a shout out to, you know, the individuals who were running the concert and that the directors were amazing. I was able to attend a meeting with Mrs. Poole here through their Little Big Kids program. I just wanted to meet with her out of curiosity because I've heard a lot about her program and I know that the district was dedicated to continuing that through some of the, you know, new plans for the new high school. And I had a really nice visit, so I just wanted to share that students were, she was so organized. The little kids, I was able to plan a trip to see the little kids in action with the big kids. And they were, they had planned lessons and activities and it was just really well-run, very efficient, and everybody was really engaged and it was a nice visit, so I was happy with that that I was able to do that. And then I attended an ELEAF meeting on, last week, and one thing that I just wanted to share, I think I shared this before, but they are gearing up for their annual gala, which is February 8th, so more information should be coming about ticket sales and everything after the holidays.
Excellent.
What's that?
Both my daughters were big kids and it's everything you say it is, yes.
It was so fantastic. I was curious just because of my day job.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm a education professor and I was like, I really want to go and see this.
Sure.
Mrs. Poole was so welcoming and so responsive and was like, come in anytime. She was absolutely wonderful and she's running a really high-quality program there. And it was interesting because she was saying, it's not just kids that want to be teachers, it's kids that are gonna be, are hoping to go into things like even physical therapy where they just know they want to work with kids in general and just get a better feel for it. So, it was great.
You have experience, Emmanuel, with the program?
Yeah.
Oh, you're in it now? Awesome.
Yes, I don't think I saw you in action, but she was awesome. So, I bet you love it.
That's right, you were with the trick-or-treaters when they came around.
Oh, yeah. Well, fine.
That's right.
Jamie, do we have the middle school concert on the loop? Awesome. Awesome, thank you. William.
I wish I had something as fascinating.
Yeah, hard to beat, right?
I haven't yet been able to report right now.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Fair enough. All right, all is well. We'll move along then. We're gonna have an opportunity for community or committee, I'm sorry, opportunity for visitors to address the committee, seeing none tonight. I'd like to take a motion to move item 7.1, approval of proprietary specifications for ELS building projects out of order as the next item of business. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion made by William. Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries four to zero. Okay, Ben, you're up.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Everyone, I'm Ben Murphy with SCANSKA, the owners' project manager for the Easton Meadow High School project. Here on behalf of the project team, as a formality in our latest 90% construction documents submission to the Mass School Building Authority, they require that their proprietary items, which have been developed by the school department, facilities department, and approved by the school building committee and then included in the construction documents to this point, must be approved by an elected body of the district as well. So, I spoke with Gordon and Greg and they were so gracious to put me on the agenda and that's why I'm here tonight. So, there was a list of six different systems in the specifications that are listed to be proprietary, that means they're sole source, they can only be provided, that those systems need to be provided and included in the new building. The reasoning, well, many reasons for each item, but the main focus is the town utilizes these systems already effectively elsewhere in town and it would be, you know, costly and ineffective for them to switch the system. So, just need to vote on that and approve it and I'll be out of your hair.
Does anybody have a list of items?
7.1, there was a letter that was originally directed to the MSBA on August 25th.
Can you go read through the items?
Sure, yeah, please.
So, that's structure wear, specified to be the building automation system, HVAC controls, if you will, access for the door access system, slage for door hardware, access security cameras for the security cameras, atlas as a box and paging system, and then access, again, as the video surveillance system.
And many of those, as you said, we use as a town and as a district.
Yes, they're all developed with the school government. But we tried not to utilize too many proprietary items. Obviously, we want a, you know, competitive bidding and as fair the prices we can get on the market, but these items were important for the district to include specifically.
Okay, so we're looking for the approve, to approve the recommended proprietary items as recommended by the SPC and are included in the construction documents. I take a motion to that effect.
I'd like to approve the recommended propriety items.
As recommended? By the SPC?
By the SPC and is included in the construction documents.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by William. Any other discussion? I would just mention that Ben has been more than an asset to us in guiding us through this process, SCANSKA and the whole team, but specifically Ben has been in every one of our events and is a wealth of knowledge, so thank you, Ben, for guiding us through this all. With that, I would take, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries four to zero. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, you too, same. Okay, moving along, we have the FY '24 end-of-year financial report audit. Thank you.
So, what I did want to pass around to you, this is an afterthought as I was thinking about talking to you about the audit, that you should probably have more documents that you better understand it. So, every year in the month of September, I complete the prior year's end-of-year financial report and every business manager in every district is doing the same thing I'm doing in the month of September. And luckily, they were able to do the audit very quickly this year and I'm really happy about that because it's hard when you go back six months later to try to figure out, I'm not sure why I did what I did, you know, those kind of things. So, what I wanted you to have here is, you always hear me talk about the DOE codes and this is the chart of accounts document that you have. We classify, DESI classifies things according to like teachers are all working together under DOE Code 2305 everywhere across the state of Massachusetts. So, that's how they can get like the different records to compare, you know, one district to the other and auditors come in to make sure that business managers are reporting things where they're supposed to be reporting, that there's no, you know, errors because that could affect the foundation budget, you know, just a lot of things behind the scenes. So, I wanted you to have that chart of accounts. And then the next document that you're gonna see is the actual Schedule I from the end-of-year report. So, this is what I use, you know, all of my reports to complete this end-of-year report and this is our operating budget, it's our grants, our revolving accounts, as well as the town expenditures that are for the school department, okay? And the last document is the town expenditures and the agreement that we have with the town and every school has an agreement with the municipality on how are they going to charge those? And DESI comes in, if that's part of the audit, to look at, are they complying with what we have agreed to? And if this document was to change, it needs to actually have DESI's approval beforehand. So, long and short, the audit is in front of you and I'm happy to say that there's only one amendment that needed to be done.
Wow.
Things were changed a tiny bit, so they're not counting those small items that are so minute in the $35 million budget that is. So, I'm really happy about that. So, one of those items that has the amendment that I needed to do was that one of the items for the active employees, the town is supposed to take the total and then charge, multiply it by the percentage of school department employees, which makes perfect sense. They accidentally just put the full amount in there. I didn't catch it, they didn't catch it, but the auditor did. So, we made that correction and it was significant, $1.4 million. So, it's those kind of things. So, everything in the document states that procedures performed without exceptions, except those ones with the insurance, which have been amended already. So, I just need to always be transparent and bring this forward to the school so that you are aware of that it was done and the audit was prepared and you just need to accept that audit.
One, just one thing, that's great, Anne.
It's really good, yes. It was quite a relief, to tell you the truth, because it takes a lot of time because whoever I told you, DESI likes to have, DESI has to have the way it is, is I not only report by the DOE codes, but we also report by every school individually. So, if the error, you have to track it back down. It's not everything follows into Schedule I, but there's different schedules behind the scenes. So, you have to like go to Schedule 18, make that, and then go to Schedule, you know, 7 and do that so that it corrects it in Schedule I. So, this was a huge relief to me, so, yes. Very pleased with it. Thank you.
Take a motion to accept, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal year '24 end-of-year financial report audit as presented.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries four to zero.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next item.
Financial monthly update.
Yeah, so, as I'm sure, don't need to remind you, I was here, as you recall, last month, I brought to your attention the projected deficit situation and the operating budget. We spoke about school choice revolving account offsetting the deficit. Going forward, I will be giving you the monthly updates because I feel compelled to do so for you. So, this is as of November 30th. We turn to page six.
This is Blair before you, again.
Yes, sure.
Add your places, just so it gives you an idea. We've been just monitoring, you know, listserv and the media and this just gives you three quick snapshots of what districts are dealing with in terms of special education costs and transportation costs and then specifically in terms of, this is Masbell, right?
If you look, it's Masbell and the superintendent's associations partnered.
Are requesting that the governor look at how Circuit Breaker is reimbursing specifically, in this case, transportation, because remember, they added transportation to Circuit Breaker but then had so many requests for reimbursement that instead of the 75% reimbursement, it went down to 44%. So, for us, that was $150,000 decrease. For other districts, that may have been countless hundreds of thousands of dollars or worse. And so, that was significant. But if you take a look at the Globe article and the Mass Live article, it just gives you some of the things that we discussed at our last meeting.
Yes, thank you, Gordon. There are many, many districts having the same exact challenge. We're not alone. So, as I always tell you, the page six is the spreadsheet for the operating budget and we have the salaries on the top section and the expenditures, expense side, on the bottom section. Unless someone wants me to go through each line, I don't feel it's necessary because it not unchanges in a month, but when it's a quarter, it's a little bit different then. So, what I want to say is that last month, I explained how I had charged the special ed expenditures that I could see that were going over the special ed operational budget lines to the school choice revolving account so that I could get a good handle on it and really see what was happening. So, there is a DESI advisory on financial administration of the school choice program regarding expenditures and it indicates a legislative intent that these funds be used for general purposes of the school choice program. Allowable expenditures include only, any expenditures for staff, materials, equipment, or services that directly enhance the quality of a district's educational programs and benefit students who currently attend a district's schools. I reached out to our outside auditor because I did want to make sure I was going about this the correct way and I was guided by her to, to charge, to use the school choice for the teacher line items, that that was the best line item for me to do that. So, it's just behind the scenes, there's journal entries and things I need to do to make that happen. So, once we discovered where we were at with the school, with the circuit breaker account being, you know, potential deficit there, which you can't really have a negative balance there. So, what did I need to do? That's why I've highlighted here, hopefully you have colored copies. So, the first one there, the blue, the overage in the circuit breaker expenditures that were reported to you last month have been reclassified to the operating budget out of district tuition account so that we report special ed expenditures accurately. Goes back to those DOE codes I talked about and the program codes and special ed is separate from the regular needs, operating, you know, program code, so that when I report things out by DOE codes, is it regular needs or is it special needs? So that that picture is very clear. So, that was the first thing I needed to do.
Pam, and because of the end, the last statement of that, because they're out of district, that they don't qualify for the circuit breaker or that doesn't make it appropriate? Is that the determining factor?
No, I'm sorry. What did I read that made you think that?
The last part of that sentence in terms of what's allowable, that must be within the school buildings, etc., or something. Is that the reason why we can't use it for out-of-district tuition?
You can, you can use Circuit Breaker for out-of-district tuition. What you can't do is you can't.
It's a school choice.
Yes, that's what you, that was my fault.
So, I was trying to correct the school choice. We saw that, yeah, so we saw that through some sorry advice, switched things around, I apologize. So, the circuit breaker, once I saw the special ed operational budget lines being depleted, I started to, as expenditures came through, I put them to the circuit breaker account, which of course, just as a reminder, we had $1,038,000 that I rolled over and we're anticipating getting close to $1.7 million again this year, but I could quickly see that this was also going to go in the negative. But it was, it's better for me to bring that picture to show you there than to, okay, so, but now I need to rectify that. So, I have moved those expenditures, those actual POs behind the scenes and the, so it just is a matter of changing it, bloop, bloop, from here to there, so that I could, because I need to report your special ed expenditures on the end-of-year report and we never want to use school choice for the special ed because we have maintenance of effort that we have to comply with, we have circuit breaker reimbursement that we would not be able to use if we were charging it not to the operational budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, following that guidance is why I'm doing the things I'm doing. So, the first one is.
May I add to that?
Yeah, no, please do.
School choice funds, as we were researching this, you can use to improve programming. So, if you put it into teacher line items and other program line items, that's a justifiable use of it. Where, to your point, add a district tuition, not necessarily improving programs, your own programs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. So, then the second item there, in like that orange, salmony kind of color, the mid-year transfer request, which we will talk about shortly, will move the operating funds from the teacher line items to the out-of-district tuition line item. We will continue to monitor and evaluate to see if additional funds need to be reclassified. So, I have not done that yet. I want you to know what I'm planning to do, so I'm very transparent and have your, you know, support in what I'm doing here so that next month when I bring it, it will look a little bit different again. And the last item is that in the green, a journal entry will be done to reclass expenditures in the teacher line items to the school choice revolving account, as we do not want to charge any special ed expenditures directly to school choice, as we need to comply with maintenance of effort. So, again, that has not been done yet, but it will be done, okay? Are there any other questions on the operational budget right now? The next page, there's not much to say again here, but I wanted to give you any kind of update that I had, or all of your grants. Again, these are entitled grants that you get every year, the district, they change a little bit. I'm monitoring these, I draw down grant funds as they become expended each month. So, the ESAR, I think I told you that grant officially ended September 30th. All expenditures are supposed to be done by December 31st unless you received approval to carry them over, which we did, so I have all of that behind the scenes. The only thing that's carrying over into the spring is the.
Playscape, is it done?
The Playscape, is that, the Playscape is done. The only thing that is not completed is the seeding of the ground. After winter, there might need to do a little more work and then reseed it on a fence. I'm not sure if the fence has gone and they had ordered it, it was on backorder. I was assured that they were gonna be able to put the material onto the poles, they were just waiting for the materials, if that makes sense, and that they would still be able to do it even if it snowed, because I was getting, it's like, is this gonna happen? Can I come take a picture?
So, it's not open yet?
So, it's, it's not technically open because she cannot allow kids to go in there unless it is fenced in.
Okay.
That's per Mass General Law. So, all we've, all we're doing is we're holding back some funds from the GZA, the company, the engineering services, because they're overseeing this. So, some of those funds and the, and the funds for the seeding and some of theirs, like a certain percentage that we wrote into the bid, that would be held back from the company that was doing the installation until the project is complete.
Yeah.
So, altogether, I think it's about $27,000, which is so interesting what we had to do. When I reached out to DESI to let them know like where exactly we were at and what I could see was gonna need to be carried over into the next, into the spring, they said that we had to move, so I had to work with the town finance director, the town treasurer, that $27,000 had to be taken from the town's pot of money, put into a new separate account so that any interest earned, I believe that if it's over $500,000, it has to go back to the federal government. So, we have to really track it very separately, but it, but we're tracking it appropriately.
Gotcha.
So, and that's where we're at with that grant. So, everything's in order. I don't think there's any questions you would probably have there. The revolving account is on the last page there, page eight. I just felt compelled to let you know on the athletic because as I was looking at that top account there, it is showing like a $31,000 deficit, but I'm talking to Kevin, those, the receipts for the winter sports were not in here yet and also gate receipts. So, the projection there is about $35,000. So, we're gonna be okay. I just don't want you to be concerned about that. So, we go right to what I've highlighted here, the school choice account. What I want you to know is, for illustration purposes, the balance reflected on the spreadsheet for school choice account includes the journal entry that will be done for those expenditures for the teacher line items totaling $496,892. So, there's eight months revenue there, that's why you see the $226,000 that I'm projecting. We get $28,327 that comes in monthly to the town, along with the Chapter 70 money that the town puts into their account and this $28,000 goes into the school choice account, which is a domain of the school committee. So, what does that do for year-end? Right now, I am saying that I believe that there could be $452,000 there, which is much better than I had thought last month. I'm saying things are constantly changing, it never quite stays the same. The other thing I just want to bring to your attention, if you go up a few accounts above that, the circuit breaker. That $862,000 for the revenue to date, that is the FY '24 fourth quarter, because it came in July, and FY '25's first quarter, which is $431,000 each quarter, that came in October. I am, after having a lengthy conversation with the town finance director, as I said, the fourth quarter typically comes in the month of July and that's how it was booked, which was for the month of July, so that's why you see it in the FY '25. It's just a matter of where does that journal entry go? So, what we are going to do this year going forward, if those funds do come in July, so we already know, that's probably a good chance, we're gonna book it in June, so that's why you're seeing perhaps that positive balance there in the circuit breaker, because it's really that fourth quarter payment that I'm including here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so does that mean we have five payments this year, fiscal year?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And we'll only have four next?
That's correct. Yep.
So, that's another.
That's how the four change is still in circuit breaker, right? Because of that fourth quarter.
That's right. Yep, that is correct.
Okay.
But I wanted you to know that I did have that conversation with her and what we are going, going to do and why, you know, you're seeing these numbers change a little bit. So, you know, as I always tell you, it's imperative to remember, if the balance is provided or it's now shot in time, they're changing constantly. I will continue to monitor and again, renew another report.
Okay, I think we'll just.
I'll say that again. The transfer is the next.
Next, yeah. We'll just continue, Pam, to try and accept the quarterlies and we'll just take it, the monthlies for informational purposes.
Sure.
Is that fair?
Sure.
Because at some point, you may not do the monthlies.
That would be nice.
If we ever get out of the monthlies, right?
Right, it is, it is possible and that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
And I also just want to make a mention that in conversations, I think we might have mentioned this last time, but I'm not sure, with the town finance director and the town manager with our preliminary, just very preliminary budget discussions and where we're at, because as you can imagine, word travels fast and so they certainly knew of our situation and so we could have a conversation with them. And they asked, they asked, I shared with them the October update, which they were very grateful for, it was, you know, giving them a much better idea of the school department budget, the way I write things up, it just, you know, helps them to better understand it. So, they did ask that I share that with them, that I share with you. So, I have it on my calendar to send to them tomorrow. I'd just like you to know that.
Awesome. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Okay, go right into the last one here. So, this is your mid-year transfer request that I, I don't typically do these transfer requests until year-end, but in talking to the committee, we felt that it was time that I, we already know, we're going to, we're going to need this and I'm hoping we won't need more of this, but as I said, what I decided to do, in working with Mr. Smith, is that rather than just take it from, because behind the scenes, as I said, I have to report DOE codes and expenditures by school, so there's teacher line items for each school. Rather than just take one and skew anything for my end-of-year report, I thought it best to just spread that out evenly, which is why you see the $99,378 at three of the schools and $99,379 at two for the grand total, $496,892. And we will transfer from the budget lines that I listed there to the out-of-district day tuition line of that $496. So, it's just moving the money from the salaries side over to the expense side.
Any questions on those? Typically, we would send that to the finance subcommittee, which is the chair and vice chair, which we did discuss at our agenda meeting, however, we hadn't posted it as a finance subcommittee meeting. So, if we're willing collectively to waive the finance subcommittee procedure, which basically happened anyway, and understand the transfers, then we can make the transfers denied and let Pam do that, if everyone's okay with that. Okay.
And I would just like to add, if anything were to change, you can always undo anything that was done in your, in your control, okay?
So, there.
Make a motion?
Yep, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal year '25 mid-year transfers as presented.
Motion made by Antonella, second by William. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
Okay, back to discussion on policy KHB advertising on school grounds. Do we have any information?
We do. Okay, so in your package, you have the whole policy, the rules and regulations and the exhibit. Based on our discussion last time, we made, or I made revisions for your approval on the regulations. So if you turn to KHB-R, the rules and regulations, and you go down to 3A, one of the revisions that we had discussed was although we don't want to advertise or promote the consumption or sale of alcohol, we do however recognize that there are establishments that sell alcohol and have a food or restaurant business and certainly we would want to allow that to happen. Also, many times we have different groups throughout the grade levels that might have a fundraising event at local restaurants and so we certainly encourage that partnership. We also took out of that the fact that if an establishment had pub or tavern in its name, something of such, that that wouldn't prohibit it from advertising.
Good.
So we tried to strike that balance between the two. So please take a look at that and if there are other changes, we certainly can make those.
Is there somewhere where it has the time for it and that the sign will be up from?
That's coming up in further...
I thought it would be in E. E, we'll see it though.
All signs need to be removed immediately at the end of the events or at the end of the duration of time approved by the East Almeida School Committee. Underlined.
Right, but isn't this the request form? So wouldn't this form say we would like to put it in on December 15th and we'll remove it on December 30th?
Right.
Talk about that? But we don't ask them to state the dates?
We do on their, their request. Did you want it in the rules and regulations?
No, I just want on the request. Where is that again? Sorry.
On dash, hmm? Right here?
Right, but I think we wanted to have them state specifically that they were sticking them in the ground on December 20th and removing them on such a date.
Okay.
Because we, then we have some teeth to it, because otherwise if they get approval and it's six months away, they could stick the sign in tomorrow and leave it until...
Next year.
The candle sale is over, which may not ever be ever, you know? And so I think we need beginning and end date.
Okay.
Yes.
But other than that...
So in the, you want me to add that?
Yeah, just date, sign will be put up or put in?
Date, start date for display, end date for display.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Please.
Sure.
Anything else on the policy or the form?
There was one other item you had asked me to take a look at in the regulations regarding tobacco and/or nicotine products. So in, under 3B, made the revision promotion of or reference to the sale or consumption of tobacco products and any products containing nicotine or depiction of the use of tobacco products or products containing nicotine in any manner. So hopefully that'll take care of vapes. And certainly, you know, depending on what your decision is this evening, if upon a request or a presentation by one of the booster groups, if we find that the form needs to be further revised, we can do that.
All right, if there's no other further questions or discussion, I'd take a motion to approve KHB with the one change to...
KHB dash.
KHB dash E for the duration of the display of the sign.
All right. I move to accept, right here, the policy KHB advertising on school grounds as presented with the exception of adding a, a date as to when the, the sign would be removed.
So I added requested start date for display, requested end date for display.
Okay.
That work?
All right. So a start date and an end date. Got a motion made by Antonella, second by Amy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries four to zero. Okay, we're back into the sign business. Thank you, Gordon.
You're welcome.
Bring them on.
It was, I know, that was a, it was a lengthy process.
It was a lengthy process.
Yeah, okay, moving right along. We have completed 7.1, so we will go on to 7.2, the science teams out of state robotics competition.
Okay, so this is a request from Mr. Van Buren, who is the science team advisor. And these are the competitions which we've noticed in the last year or so have shifted slightly from mostly robotics competitions to actual drone competitions, which is kind of exciting. And if you...
Are they the size of buses and flying at 500 feet or?
None of, none of the ELHS drones or ELPS drones are flying above any airports to my knowledge.
I'm glad we see that.
Yes, yes. But if you do come after school on Mondays, you can see them practicing in the cafeteria and in the hallway, they set up the obstacle course and it's pretty cool.
Okay. They have the goggles on?
They don't have the...
Goggles, no?
Do they have?
If they're flying around the corner, they must, no?
You know, they may. I'd have to, I was, I was kind of looking at how they're navigating the different...
One day after school, they said?
Mondays.
Yeah, check it out.
Yeah.
Cool. Meets all these standards for chaperones?
It does.
Missing school?
I believe most of them are on weekends.
Okay.
Generally, the ones that they have to miss school for are when they get into the championships.
Okay, they raise $4,100 that year, that's pretty good.
Yeah, that's really cool.
And has recommendation by Mr. Page as well. Okay, if there are any further questions? Motion made by Amy, second by William. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries four to zero.
Just to let Mr. Van Buren know, he'll be excited about that.
And finally, on our agenda, we have the naming of the naditorium. The school building committee as well, well, we haven't met as a school, as a pool building committee in a while, but the architects and such are looking for us to name the building basically so they can budget the letters required to put the name over the door, is why, it's a timely thing. So this is the jurisdiction of the school committee. We have full jurisdiction over all the school buildings, so it's our purview to actually name, name it. So with that, to toss out for suggestions, naditorium seemed a preferred word over pool, at least with the SPC. We had discussions about putting the word community in there because we have that as a focal, certainly as we tried to get approval from the town funding, that it would be open to the community as much as possible. So to put that in the name may be appropriate if we think so.
You had Spartan naditorium?
Spartan nad, yeah, or Spartan Community Naditorium came up too. Pam had come up with that one. East Almeida Community Naditorium potentially, but certainly open to any and all suggestions from this group.
When does this have to be decided?
Right now.
You have to order.
And I gotta leave in five minutes, so let's go.
They, basically what the architects are trying to do is they've put, actually right now at the request of the building committee, they've put as many letters, they put a much longer name in there.
East Almeida, Big Song Meadow. Community Naditorium. We've budgeted for our possibility, basically.
So that's covered in the budget. If we come back with something that the school committee has approved and it's within that or fewer letters, we're good.
And my friend Jamie mentioned that it's worth being intentional because when people search on how to get there, they need to know the name of it. And so we need to name it something so that when they search it, they know what to call it, right?
Right.
So that's where we're at. We don't have to decide today. If we want to push this till the next one, that would be all right too, because we haven't funded.
I mean, for the rest of being corny, we have one of the longest-serving superintendents in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts sitting right at the table.
Yeah.
Why the hell not? I'm serious.
Oh, I don't know about that, but that's very nice, but...
I mean, why not?
Hey, I think the...
He's spearheaded this entire project and been a champion of our...
That was an unexpected twist.
Why? Why? He's spearheaded this project from day one and been a supporter of a new high school for this town, much needed for many years. He's on the edge somewhere, on the edge of retiring. Why the hell not?
I don't know, it sounds like a motion.
I think so.
Well, in the past, historically, the school committee has shied away from naming things after people. We've also shied away specifically of naming things after people who are still alive.
I mean, he's definitely alive.
Which we know, right? And so, and that's been brought to my attention from others, that that has been past precedent. So that's one thing.
How come?
Why?
Is there a reason for that?
Well, if you, if you, and this has no reflection on our superintendent, but if you name something after someone, and we've seen this, it's happened, and then they do something terrible, right? And it no longer works, right? Or...
This man's gonna drop the...
I know, Gordon is the same. He's insane, he's an angel. I'm not worried about it. I'm just saying, this is our practice.
I'm not your superintendent serving super in the...
And the other thing is, you know, 20, 30 years from now, nobody knows who the person is you named it after.
Exactly.
And it's fine. Hey, those are my two things. You want to do it, we do it, huh?
Hey, and thank you very much. You're very, very nice to do that, but I do think the, the building committee was very sincere about getting community in there, so...
Community Naditorium? I make a motion.
That's less than, that's less than East Almeida.
Why?
I think we probably should take a meeting to think about this, because I know I'm turning red.
I put it out there. I made a motion.
I do like the idea of putting someone that has done a lot for our community, yes, but I also feel like it should have like a name, not the person's name, and then maybe we, I don't even know if you could do something like this, but...
Name line would be fun.
Yeah, well, name the diving board after it. But how about the scoreboard or something? I don't know.
Dedicating it to someone that's been relevant to our community in some way, but it could also change in 10 years, so it stays relevant to our communities.
Yeah. So you're suggesting give it a name, but then dedicated by or dedicated the...
But not like over it, just maybe on the side. Like on the side, like this is...
Small inscription, this one.
I've got downgrade it.
I'll let you do that, Gordon.
Okay, thanks.
You had to practice first, though.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know, because there, there have been a lot of dedicated people to our community, to our district, to our schools, to coaching, to...
Well, how do we recognize all of them in one fell swoop? How do we recognize them?
I don't know how you do it.
Who more than Gordon, though, in the past couple decades?
Well, I, I mean, there are high school swim coaches that had a substantial impact in a lot of people's lives. And so that would be relevant, I think.
That's, I think so too.
I wouldn't go, and I know...
I'm talking more like just as a, like...
The whole...
Yeah, yeah. I, I wasn't trying to...
Well, we can name or not, it's hard to name after someone too, but like I said, we don't normally do people. We haven't historically done it. That doesn't mean that it can change, but, all right, we're gonna, how about we table it and we'll let Sarah give some input and bring it back next time?